All right, being the appointed hour, I want to call the meeting to order. This evening, we have all board members in attendance. We have two board members who are joining us virtually, Ms. Kermersky and Ms. O'Brien. And with that, please rise and join me with the pleasure of each. Thank you, everyone. We're pleased to be here at one of our elementary schools, Red Mill. Have some exciting presentations this evening and hear about our programs here at Red Mill, and especially the pre-K program. So the first item on our agenda, though, is the Student Council, Ryan and Emma. You guys have a nice holiday?
Yes, we did. Thank you very much. All right. Well, welcome back. New year. All right. So students have been preparing for midterms and final exams, which have already begun, and they'll be going on for the next few weeks. And Student Council, so in the first half of the year, I'm sure you guys heard all about our like ton of events, you know, homecoming, Spirit Week, breast cancer awareness, we got holiday events. That's the first half of the year. So in the second half of the year, we have a lot less to do, a lot less of those like annual events. So right now, we're really looking for like new ideas from students, and that's what we're excited about for this year. So at our meeting today, we asked our members for like input on like new changes they want to see in the school, new stuff they want to see Student Council to do. And that's what we're going to be meeting with about with Mr. Harkin on Friday.
So we're also looking to reach out with the whole school for input they have. And we're planning to send out a Google form within a month so that they can hear directly from the students. We've also been considering new ideas for fundraisers or charity events that we have for the upcoming semester. And because we're brainstorming a lot of new ideas, we welcome any input that the board and Mr. Simons have, especially as we reach out to students.
So if you guys have any ideas, you can tell us now, or you can email us, whatever works for you.
Great. Thanks, guys.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you very much.
So we have a special presentation this evening. Our Red Mill Elementary School update and overview on the pre-K program. I know we had some guests. So I will turn it to Ms. Colaci to for the presentation and introduction of some of the guests.
Thank you. Thank you, Board of Education and Mr. Simons for joining us here at Red Mill. It's it's our pleasure to host you this evening. It's great to see you back out at the schools and at Red Mill School. We're always excited when you come around and see the great things that are happening in our school building. Tonight, we wanted to highlight something that's new for our district and certainly new here in Red Mill School. And that is our wonderfully exciting universal pre-K program. So we do have some team members here with us tonight from our preschool program. We have two of our teachers, Alyssa Patrasnick. She can give you a wave. We have Mrs. Priscilla Halsey. She's another one of our preschool teachers. We have Cindy Heron, who is the Assistant Director of Special Education for Questar Three Boces, and Anthony Tabey, who is the Chief Academic Officer at Questar Three Boces. And they help support and run the program. As you know, we partner with Questar Three Boces for our preschool program. So with no further ado, let's talk about how we got here. Our roadmap roadmap to pre-K. And for those of you who are newer to our Board of Education, or new in the audience to knowing about our program here, last spring, we found out that we were the wonderful recipient, along with 210 other school districts in New York State, as first time UPK recipients for grant funding to start up a universal pre-K. So we were super excited about that. And we decided to get a group of stakeholders together and launch a pre-K committee of there were board members on the stakeholder group, Mr. Simons, Mrs. Wager, and we also had some administrators on the team. We talked about how to best go about utilizing our funds and make sure that we were able to offer a real high quality program to our students. So we put out a request for proposals because at the time, it was very late in the end of the school year, we realized that we're not experts at preschool. We have not, you know, implemented a preschool program within our own school community yet. So why not put out a request for proposals to folks and agencies in the community that have had multiple years of experience implementing and operating preschool programs? So that is what our pre-K team decided to do. And after reviewing all the applicants, it was very obviously clear to us that the best partner for East Greenbush Schools' pre-K would be Questar Three Boces. We have a long history of successful partnerships with Questar Three, and they had many, many years of experience operating UPK programs in local school districts. I think 13 years of experience, Cindy, am I correct? Even more than that. Okay. So a lot of experience. And they also have a reputation for hiring high quality staff and retaining high quality staff. So that was very important to us, as we always want that for our children here. Next step was number three in our roadmap, looking at an application that we sent out to all parents of four-year-olds in our catchment areas at all of our five elementary homeschool zones, and letting them know that this opportunity was available to them. Parents started to apply. And in the meantime, behind the scenes, Questar Three Boces started the recruitment and interviewing process. And Linda Wager and her team started the ordering of materials and supplies to set up our program. Meanwhile, the lottery selection took place at the beginning of October. And that was a public lottery session with one of our auditors present to make sure that we we made it a random lottery. And after that, we started our first day of preschool here at Red Mill School on October 25. And boy, what an exciting day was that. And now we've been in operation about 12 school weeks since then. You got it? Okay, thank you, Peter. I thought it might be interesting to take a deeper look at our application and enrollment process. One thing that was of curiosity to me was are random lotteries really random? And who applied to to take a spot of the 36 spots that we had available for students across our district? So as you can see, we had roughly 98 applicants coming from Belltop, Janay, Red Mill, Green Meadow, and Donald P. Sutherland School. One item of interest there, you can see there were 33 Red Mill applicants and 32 Janay applicants. So roughly 65 of our 98 applicants came from those two schools that are very close. Red Mill is right here, and Janay is right up the street, about two miles away. And you can see that in the first selection of the random lottery draw, the numbers that were pulled are very reflective of the applicants, of the number of applicants. Certainly, we had more Janay and Red Mill lottery draws. And of course, there were more applicants from those schools. So I thought that the numbers pulled reflected the numbers of applications from each school. And the large majority of applicants did come from Janay and Red Mill. Now, once we offered the first 36 pull the spot, we contacted parents, and many of them said, absolutely, we can't wait to start. And then there were a few that that declined a spot, and then we would offer it to the next person on the list. And Mrs. Pangburn, who's here with us tonight, continues to do that as students may move or leave the program, though that's not very frequent, the next spot would be offered to a student. And the reasons for declining and declining a spot were typically a student who had already been enrolled in another pre-K program. They were comfortable there, and their parent wanted them to finish out the year there. And the other reason for a parent declining a spot might have been lack of an after-school program. And we did partner with GCC, our Greenbush Childcaring, to try to see if that we could get a after-school program started. But after working with the Office of Children and Family Services and getting approval to run one, GCC then found that we did not have enough parents who needed that after-school care to make it viable for them to run it. Okay, so in looking at the enrollment and the application and lottery draw, future considerations for our board and for our school community are the initial applications reveal that proximity does matter. So the way it it came out, it looks as if two-thirds of the applicants are from the closest homeschools to Red Mill School. So we may want to think about that in the future as we consider growing preschool opportunities, looking to expand locations and providing more opportunities to more students, and encompassing more school zones with locations closer. We also want to continue to consider budgeting options because, as I mentioned earlier, most of the funding is from the state grant and from the American Rescue Act. And while we are very hopefully optimistic that those funds will continue, I think it's important to start the conversations about what we would do should we not have those funds available to us, and how we would continue this very important opportunity for our students. So let's talk about a typical day in our preschool program at Red Mill School. First, I want to tell you about our awesome team. Our pre-K team consists of Room Seven and Room Nine. You can go to the next slide, Mr. Goodwin. There we go. Room Seven, Alyssa Patrasnick is our wonderful teacher, and her assistant there is Tanya Olzagostie. And then in Room Nine, we have Mrs. Halsey, and her wonderful assistant is Reagan Bocage. These fine educators have multiple, multiple years of preschool experience. I believe Alyssa came from Cohoes in a UPK program, and Mrs. Halsey came from Troy in a UPK program. And both of them just fit in perfectly with our school community here, and their expertise and experience just made it a very smooth start. So we're very appreciative of that. Each day in our pre-K, we, of course, have three very important components to our curriculum. One big piece is social interaction for students. And you know that is so important, especially in the challenging couple of years we've had, especially for these little ones to be able to interact socially with other peers their age. We also want to teach them kindergarten readiness skills and foundational skills in literacy and numeracy. And all of that very important focus is done through very nurturing, child-centered, and age-appropriate activities all day long in the classroom. Here's a sample of what a typical day looks like in our pre-K program. It's a very packed day, as Mrs. Patrasnick and Mrs. Halsey would tell you. We start at 8:15 a.m., we end at 2:15 p.m., and we begin each day with morning meeting, well, with breakfast, of course. And all of our students are very, very excited about the free breakfast and lunch program that all East Greenbush Central School Districts are benefiting from this school year. And they really enjoy the breakfast. They start with a morning meeting in circle time. They do greetings and calendar and weather. They work on some literacy activities and have a teacher read aloud. There's music and movement and dance party time. We have lots and lots of fine motor activities, which are very important for students to build their fine motors for future work as they move up in the grade levels, and important morning work. We always build an outdoor play unless we have inclement weather. And then we have our lunch in center time, story time, and we even have a quiet time where some rest, and occasionally a few might take a little nap. I thought it might be nice to show you the kids in action, because it's a lot more fun than listening to me speak. So as you can see, and in their voice, they want you all to know that we love to read in our preschool program. And here they are. And you can just look at these pictures of these sweet little boys and girls, and they really reflect their love of books and literature, and showing that their attention span is building each day as they look very carefully at the illustrations in their books. And our teachers, Ms. Patrasnick and Mrs. Halsey, have really well-stocked classroom libraries, and they display their books so interestingly for the kids to see and be excited about. They do lots of read-alouds. There's independent reading time. And, you know, they're looking at skills like building print awareness. We want our little ones to know that it's important that they read from top to bottom and left to right, and know the parts of a book. They're building their vocabularies and narrative skills, understanding how to tell a story and the sequence of events in a story, and so on. Next up, we even go to the library. And here you can see them with Ms. Griffin, our wonderful Red Mill librarian, who's teaching them all about library skills and a love of books and literature. And they really love going to the library class. And here they are enjoying some more story time. We also run and play. And here they are during one of our more inclement days in the gym, in this very gym. And they play with balls and hula hoops, and they run and jump on mats and do tumbling, and they just have a ball. Next, we love to explore. And last week, when we came back from our holiday break, we started some winter-themed activities. And you can see them here with some homemade snow that was made in their classroom, playing in their water and sand tables with actual homemade snow. They really had a blast with that. And throughout the year, we've had some really neat things in those water and sand tables that the teachers put in for the kids exploring. We also create, and you can see a lot of those fine motor activities where the students are building their hand muscles and their core trunk muscles to be able to sustain longer activities in their futures. They're doing lots of cutting and pasting and gluing and writing. And here we have some of their lovely creations. They were studying S's and gluing straws and stars on their S's, making beautiful little snowmen. They made some watercolor mittens over there on the right, and little tissue paper themed snow hats, all keeping with our winter theme. And lastly, Mr. Simons, we are so happy you did not call a two-hour delay last Friday, because guess what? We ended our week in a perfect way with our winter theme, and we got to go outside and play in the snow. And here you can see our wonderful children making their snow angels and enjoying zipping down that slide with the snow on it. It was a perfect, perfect end to our winter-themed week last week. And in conclusion, Red Mill loves pre-K. Our new pre-k program is such a welcome addition to our district community. We're so proud to host it here at Red Mill School. And our youngest learners are just benefiting each day from all of the engagement and the high-quality activities and programming that Ms. Patrasnick and Mrs. Halsey are providing. Thanks to this talented team, we will really have these kiddos in good shape for kindergarten as they enter kindergarten next year. And that concludes our program. If you have any questions or comments, the team is here, and I'm here, and we can answer them for you.
Thank you, Helen. Board members, any questions about the program? I hope you had a chance to visit the classrooms. Thumbs up. Any comments from our teachers or Questar staff that support the program? Anything you want to say? Don't be shy. Last chance. Mr. Tabey? Alyssa? Awesome. Awesome. Yeah.
I was thinking that, too, when I counted up the weeks, and I said, oh, my gosh, it's only 12 weeks. It feels like you have lived here your whole lives. Right.
Excellent. I know that the Red Mill community has always been very welcoming. And, you know, as someone who works for Questar and with the special ed programs here for a long time, and just that it just, it's so nice to see that we're able to offer this opportunity to our families and to our students who are going to be in our elementary schools next year. And this transition is going to be wonderful. It looks like you already have a handful of kids that will be coming to kindergarten next year, and Helen. So I think the big thing for me is, you know, and maybe Linda can add some comments, Mr. Simons, about the success of a program like this and sustaining it and just continuing to plan and to try to at least offer this. As you said, I think it was very telling. You know, I wrote down the proximity of applications to the program around the Red Mill community area was was very high. And I think if we can continue to expand the program to other locations, you know, space considerations, things like that, obviously costs. But I think this just will just help our students get a leg up, especially during the times now when when we're dealing with so much. So I really hope that as we plan our budgets and look at the programs, we can consider continuing offering this and continue the partnership with Questar Boces, and hopefully we'll continue to get that that state support, and even federal support.
Thank you, Mr. Buno. Yes. I just want to thank Mrs. Colaci and the team from Questar for all you did to help the transition into the new program go very well. And Mr. Squatzi, I appreciate such a positive presentation you provided the board tonight. It's really been great to see the little ones doing so well. From the time they came in October to the time, they didn't know how to sit down and follow a direction, really, in a school setting. And now you walk into the classroom. It's just, it's like you work miracles with these little ones. So I appreciate all that you've done. I know how far they've come.
Yeah, excellent. Excellent. Any final comments or questions, board members? All right, good. It's it's unfortunate, I know, that we would typically have some parents and kids here and things like that, and be able to celebrate a little bit more. But thank you for the presentation. You just got a great perspective on the on the program. So wonderful program. With that, we will move to the next item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes from 12:15. Again, thank you for coming. Have a good night. The approval of draft minutes for December 15, 2021 meeting. Any comments, questions, or revisions to the minutes? I know myself and Kathleen were not present. No? See, none need a motion to approve the minutes. John, I need a second. Mark, all those in favor? All those obscening? Approved. Thank you. Can you guys hear me all right? Michelle, Jennifer? Good? Okay. Our next item is the board forum. I will start with our board members who are virtual. Jennifer, anything?
Um, no, not at this time.
You're good? Okay. Michelle?
I'm good.
Good. So I'll start at my right. Frank, anything? Good. Joanna? Kathleen? Mark?
Just a quick comment. I want to thank Mr. Simons and Questar, because one of the things...
Is this thing on? Yeah. All right. Good to go. I just want to thank Questar and Mr. Simons for taking that project on. One of the initiatives since I've been on the board has been to, since Mr. Simons came to this district, was to improve the relationship and collaboration with Questar and all the other stakeholders and resources in our community. And without that being met, Mr. Simons, we would not have a pre-k program today. So I think I just wanted to point that out, that we're moving forward. And in these challenging times, we need to really work together, put the fatigue aside. And it's clearly shown tonight by this demonstration that when we put the kids first, good things happen. So thank you and your team and the board and Questar people. Mike, take that back to them, that we really appreciate the new relationships that we've fostered. Thank you.
And Mark maybe can mention at the board meeting tomorrow. Cheryl? Good? Okay. I'm good. Moving on to the next item on our agenda is the public forum. We do have the email set up, I believe, Mr. Simons, in case there is someone who wants to do that. So I'll read the blurb here. Residents, students, employees, and business representatives of the East Greenbush Central School District may address the board on matters concerning programs and/or operations of the district of the matters involving personnel. Members of the board do not directly respond to citizens' concerns during the public forum. If a response is appropriate, either the president or superintendent will contact the individual in the near future. Those persons wishing to address the board will be recognized by the chair of the meeting and should state for the record their name, address, or affiliation with the district or business. While the board does not wish to infringe upon free speech protections, it must be stressed that the visitors' forum is not deemed to be an open forum. The board president will conduct the forum for orderly and efficient operation of board business. In addition, any remarks which may be considered defamatory or stigmatizing or prohibited, we declare out of order. All comments should be limited to five minutes. And like I said earlier, we do have the email comments. Do we have anything? Who's monitoring the email?
Mrs. Wager, even though she's engaged to remote, is monitoring that email. Linda, can you hear us?
I can hear you, and we do not have any comments at this time.
Okay. Thank you, Linda. There, we do have a second board board and public forum later on. If you have comments, feel free to send those to the the email. All right. With that, I will turn it over to Mr. Simons for reports and presentations of the superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Buno. I want to welcome all the board members and participating virtually. Mr. McHugh is excused from the meeting tonight, but I will be pinch hitting for Mr. McHugh and presenting some information on how our school district is tracking the experiences of our graduates. A few years ago, as a result of a board member's initiative, and it was Mrs. Taylor, I believe, the board had attended the National School Board Conference and had learned about some ways that school districts were utilizing some tools to see how the kids were doing and touching base with the kids. One of the tools that we use is the National Student Clearinghouse data, which is available really across the country. And it is a source nationwide to track the sources of college enrollment and degree data, really a way to measure how many students are going to four-year colleges, to two-year colleges, how many students are persisting from the time that they enter into their freshman year and graduating within four years. What are some of the demographics associated with maybe some different outcomes of students who go to four-year or two-year schools? Additionally, we have a tool in our district, and Peter, if you can advance the slides, called the LifeTrack Survey, which I will talk about as well. In addition to collecting this data and looking at this data, we use this data to inform our students, our parents, our faculty and staff, in particular, our counselors and our teachers, to see what we could do to make sure that our students and our families understand the choices that are available to them, and the pathways that they can start to pursue while still in high school, to make good decisions about what they're going to do after they graduate from high school. And over the course of the last several years, the board has asked the district administration to ensure that we are not only developing pathways and programs for those kids that want to go to college, but we are working on other partnerships to make sure that we are encouraging students who may want to pursue the trades, vocational education. And some of this data that we have on college actually reveals some trends that may at first seem negative, but could actually be positive when you dig a little deeper. So our student tracker looks at our enrollment, our graduation data. How many kids within each cohort of graduation go to two-year schools, four-year schools, trade schools, and vocational pursuits? We use this data combined with our own data to look at trends and patterns, and to advise our staff, our parents, and our students. Next slide. I'm one behind. Go to the next one, Peter. We are tracking our students' success. We are looking at ways that we can identify those trends and patterns. Advance, Peter. The LifeTrack Survey is a different tool, again, that was brought to us by a board member. And we The Life Track Survey is a different tool, again, that was brought to us by a board member, and we've been implementing it over the last several years. We survey our seniors during their year of graduation, and then we resurvey our seniors eighteen months after they graduate to see how they're doing and how they feel that they were prepared uh by by the district uh for what they are doing, either in college or in their current pursuits. We have a fairly high return rate for that Life Track Survey. Uh we will be re-surveying those same students five years after graduation. While we expect that the return rate may dip a little bit, we are seeing uh high interest in the survey. We work with Life Track on an annual basis to make sure that we have the survey completed, and we have been able to have input into the types of questions that we ask through the Life Track Survey. It gives us an insight on how well our kids are doing, but also what they are doing and what we can do better in our district. Next slide. There are some assumptions that we are making as we look at the data. We know that over the course of the last two years, the college experience of our students has been different, been impacted by the pandemic. We also know that in some cases, students and families may have made a choice not to enter into college immediately after school uh after they graduate. But as we look at the data on our students, we also see increases in the number of kids that are going to college, maybe second semester, maybe after two years of graduating from college. And so they are going to college. It's just we have a we have a circumstance where those students may not be immediately going into college, uh going into work, uh doing or working, possibly pursuing uh certificates and other types of uh credentials that are available at the community college level. But we would point out that our our statistics on the number of students that go to four-year and two-year college, as well as a number of students that persist, moving from their freshman year to their sophomore year, as well as the four-year graduation rate, and all indicators, our statistics are higher than the national average. Next slide. We have also expanded ways that we are working with the business community and the trade unions through our Business Advisory Committee to offer opportunities to those students that may not want to go to college. We've changed the name of our college fair to a career readiness night, and we have brought in not only two-year and four-year colleges, but also representatives from the trades as well as other opportunities for technical training after graduation. We are seeing some differences between the percentage of our students that go into college uh when we compare our economically disadvantaged students to all students. We have a little lower uh percentage of students who are considered by New York State indicators to be economically disadvantaged entering into college, but our eight-year average is approximately fifty-two percent uh compared to eighty-one percent. Over the last eight years, approximately forty-nine point nine percent of our students with disabilities have attended college after graduating from high school, and that is well above the national average. And I want to thank our special education staff, our administrators, our director of PPS, our former director of PPS, who was here, Mrs. Squatchy, both our graduation rate from high school for students with disabilities and the percentage of our students that enter into college who had IEPs while in high school are far above the national average, and that is a credit to our program. Next slide. Additionally, we have looked at our graduation classes over the course of the last few years. Our three-year average for college on-time completion uh is broken down by all students and also various other subgroups of students. For all of our students over the course of the last several cohorts from two thousand thirteen to two thousand fifteen, fifty-eight point six seven percent of our students entered to college and graduated within four years. The national average is only forty-six percent. So there is a lot of discussion a few years ago about high school graduation rates. The college graduation rates average about forty-six percent. That means students who enter in their freshman year and graduate within your typical four years. However, that doesn't mean that students aren't graduating from college. They're taking more time to graduate from college. They're making different life choices. They may take time off after uh their freshman year. They may go to work. They may decide that they may go back into college and pursue some kind of technical certificate. But graduation rates for colleges don't necessarily tell the whole story and don't necessarily reflect poorly on students making choices that are necessarily in their best that are in their best interests. However, in all cases, our percentages exceed national averages. Mr. Goodwin? Uh Mr. McHugh has prepared data looking at those students who enter into school immediately after they graduate. So they graduate in June. They're entering into college in the in the fall. Okay, and we look at that. We looked at the classes of two thousand thirteen through the class of twenty twenty-one. And you can see from the data that over the last two years, there's been a slight decline in the number of students that actually enter into college immediately after graduation. And we speculate that that may be because of some of the impact of COVID nineteen people waiting. We know that in that first year after uh two thousand nineteen, twenty, there was a lot of discussion about people waiting to go into college to see what was going to happen in terms of the impact of COVID nineteen on the college campuses. Additionally, we looked at over the course of the last several, actually eight years. We looked at whether or not kids were entering four-year colleges or two-year colleges right after they graduated. And there is a little bit of variance. The average over the eight years of students entering into four-year colleges immediately after graduation is about forty-five percent, forty-four point six percent. The year eight-year average over a two-year period entering into a two-year school is thirty-one point nine. Next slide. We also looked at not entering into college immediately, but those students that made choices that at some point in their first year after high school entering, for example, maybe entering in the second semester. And you can see again that the the percentages increase slightly over the number of kids that entered immediately after uh graduating by about two percent. But again, we see a slight decline in that. So more kids are going into college after waiting a little bit. However, overall, the number of kids that enter into college in their first year uh dips because, again, we think it's because of the impact of the college experience and very being very different under the pandemic. Next slide. We looked at the breakdown of four-year versus two-year. Again, we see that um at some point in their first year after high school, uh kids are entering college. Uh the numbers have dipped the last couple of years. But again, this information is instructive because we understand that kids are in different experiences right now. Some kids may be deciding, again, uh to work for a little bit a while. Uh we also see that in some cases, there are trends where kids that may go to two-year schools. They started a two-year school part-time. Uh they're working part-time and they're working uh uh going to school part-time, or they're working full-time and going to school part-time. And at some case, at some point, they've made a decision that they're going to continue to work and maybe go back to school at another point. Next slide. So basically, as we go through the information, we're looking at eight different years of uh our students. One of the things that we look at is the percentage of students that enter into school their freshman year and persist to their sophomore year. And on average, over the last seven, seven years, eighty-seven percent of our students that enter into college on average over the last seven years are successful in their freshman year, move into their sophomore year, and that is well above uh what the trends that we're seeing. So I think we're doing a pretty good job of transitioning our students into their freshman year. And one of the things we believe is important is not only that they are academically prepared, but they are socially, emotionally prepared for that transition. I think we're doing a pretty good job of working with our parents at fostering the independent that's required for the students to be successful and persist in college. Again, just breaking this down uh by different levels, four-year versus two-year. Interestingly, our students that enter into cow for your colleges, we have a very high percentage of those students that persist and that graduate. Uh ninety-nine percent ranges from ninety-nine percent in two thousand thirteen to ninety-four percent in two thousand nineteen. At the two-year level, there is a lower percentage. However, the data doesn't tell us what choices the students made. So again, you could go to Hudson Valley Community College, for example, and you could take some courses that lead to a credential. You don't necessarily need to graduate to have the credentials that you need to enter into uh a very good paying job. And that's a conversation that we've been having with Hudson Valley, and we will be sharing this Hudson, this data with Hudson Valley at one of our education committee meetings. So digging a little deeper into this, we want to look at uh those students that are not persisting at two years, uh uh two-year school. What choices are they making and what are they doing? And how could that information be instructive to our district? Next slide. And then we look at the national averages for public colleges and universities versus private colleges and university. Colleges are tracking their graduation rates based on six years or more. They no longer even track their four-year graduation rate in many cases. In some cases, they do. In some cases, they don't. Uh but from two thousand thirteen to two thousand fifteen, uh the average is uh thirty-three percent for public colleges graduating over six years and fifty-three percent for the uh colleges and universities. Are we on the right slide?
Keep going.
So yeah, we're right there. So again, looking at our two thousand thirteen class, our two thousand fourteen class, and our two thousand fifteen class, uh we are above the persistent levels for graduation, uh six-year graduation rate for both public college universities and private colleges and universities for our students. Again, we break it down by four-year versus two-year schools. Next slide. And we are um also, one more, Peter. We also are looking at um the time that was needed to graduate from college within six years, typically for an associate's, a bachelor's, or or higher. And the percentage of those students in each of the three years that we measured that obtained a degree in two years, obtained a degree in three years, obtained a degree in four years, five, six, et cetera. Next slide. And we also look at the choices for colleges that our Columbia High School students are making. Interestingly, uh in the in the years of two thousand thirteen through two thousand nineteen, seven hundred and seventy of our students went to Hudson Valley Community College. So it is the 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 highest in terms of uh where our students go to school, followed by local schools, University at Albany, Siena College, and then we have University of Buffalo and on down the line. So we look at the colleges that our students go to. Uh and um these are seem to be the ones that attract our students. So at this point, I'll take any questions or comments. We also have some other presentations that we're planning during the year that involve looking at our students uh and their involvement in the trades. And I'll take any questions that you might have.
A lot of data. I think part of it too is I think I'm glad to hear you're going to share that with the um local community colleges because the college experience or the certificate experience and the and the way we found out through the virtual experience in the last couple of years that college, traditional colleges have to shift. And how we prepare students at the high school level for for success at the, you know, higher ed level is different. And um the opportunity to do things, not just in a a school, to our school, you can cobble together a lot of things through virtual classes at different schools. There's so much more that's changing. And I think we just really have to look at what are we offering our students to make them successful as they enter into a a program. And I'd be really interested in the Life Tracker data because this discovered the, you know, the higher ed data, two and four-year schools, the it's it's important to look at the military and the career opportunities that people uh can get pretty quickly that may have um you know, impacted that data clearly.
Yes. The Life Track data will show us more about what the students are are actually doing, including, like you said, Mike, uh those students that may not be pursuing college. And then he also gave us feedback on particular courses that they felt were helpful in preparing them for whatever they're doing.
Any other comments or questions?
Okay, thank you. You're welcome.
So just a comment of how, you know, great the results are, Jeff, and and how much improvement um and success that we're having. So it really says a lot to the dedication that we have to our students uh in the high school area.
Thank you, Michelle.
Anyone else? No, good. We'll now move to a another uh item, the Adopt a Family Recognition. Mr. Simons?
Uh yes, I'd like to invite Mr. Leonard up. I don't know if he knew I was doing this, but uh Mr. Leonard is going to talk about the success of our Adopt a Family program, which Mr. Leonard has coordinated for a number of years and very, very successfully impacting our community in a positive way.
No, I mean, I simply just wrote you a letter to recognize Audra, Lois, and uh Shannon. Without them, this program wouldn't help. I think we had like forty-seven families and we uh served over a hundred and twenty-five kids. That's what we've averaged over the last. I think this is year thirteen or fourteen. I I can't remember, but it's a great program. It's all our own school and community kids. We work with uh all of our local counselors, like right down here at Red Mill. Um we box up the stuff. Uh we get a list, we box it up, deliver it down to Helen, and it just it's a, you know, a great thing that we do. We had a lot of athletic teams participate, a lot of our own kids pick items, select items to donate. We had a lot of departments, um administration. Uh we have a lot of youth uh sporting teams that participate, a lot of alumni. So it's a really great community effort businesses. So it's a big undertaking. I just want to recognize the three of them uh for doing a great job. So they've been doing it for many years. So.
We may need to build an extra large room onto the high school for the number of presents that you have to store in your offices, in your storage rooms, in the locker rooms, in the conferences rooms, from what I've seen.
Yeah, well, we'll have to work on that quickly.
I think he's using that to get that extra gym back that he wanted.
Yeah, well, that's another conversation. So we'll work a deal. But no, it's a great program. It's been in place for a long period of time. Our first year, we did at Albany uh Medical Hospital, then for years and years, we did it with social services. And then actually, we kind of transitioned when a lot of student athletes and some coaches came and said, hey, Mike, you know, some of our own athletes are homeless and are in need. So we kind of shift gears and started doing an in-house program, and now just expanded to our whole school community. So it's worked out great. And you know, we even picked up a few families at the you know, that that Thursday, I think, the twenty-third. So we even picked up some late people, but we have a lot of stuff, and we still have some stuff left over that we can kind of carry over for next year.
Good. That's a cool idea.
Thank you, Mark.
And I have a group of, a, a great group of alumni athletes that, oh my God, they're probably, you know, two thousand, two thousand one, two. And they contacted me. I said, hey, I really need some food cards. So, you know, they showed up with like a thousand dollars worth of gift cards. So not only did each family get all the gifts, they each got fifty to a hundred, even two hundred dollars worth amount of grocery cards, which I think is important too.
For the district to help our kids. We would be remiss not to point out that all this starts in the office of the of Mr. Leonard of Athletics. The work that happens out of his office personally, his secretary's office, his home through Facebook. Amazing amount of work that you have put through, Mike, and you've channeled, and we appreciate every single thing you did, and we recognize all of the work you've done. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanne. Thank you, Mr. Leonard. It's, it's great to see the community come together and the leadership that's, that's displayed to support our families in need and, you know, and our students. So thank you again. Appreciate it. With that, we'll go to our discussion items. The first item on discussion is the energy report update.
Mrs. Wager, our Director of Business and Finance, and Tom Brunel, who is a Red Mill teacher, but also our Energy Manager, annually present the board with a report regarding our energy savings program. The information that is presented tonight is really important because we want to demonstrate to our community all of the efforts that are made at the board's direction to save costs where we can in ways that don't impact our children. So I'm going to turn the presentation over to Linda and Tom. Linda is remote and Tom is here in person. Just give an overview of the information, the energy program, and answer any board questions. So start with Linda.
Thank you, Mr. Simons. Tonight for your review, I've provided you a report that is our energy savings program update. So we attempt to save energy cost in a couple of different ways. One of the ways is that we cross contract with OCM BOCES with New York Municipal Energy Consortium. And this allows us to participate in a cooperative bid for natural gas and electric supply. So this gives us better purchasing power, better rates. The way this program works is we pay OCM BOCES six equal installments during the year. The actual energy bills are sent directly to OCM BOCES. In September or October of the, after the end of the year, they do a reconciliation. And typically, the district receives a refund or, or if there was a shortage, the district would receive a bill. Since we started this program in oh seven, oh eight, we have always received a refund, and that refund usually runs between eighty and eighty-five thousand dollars. Another way that we look to save energy cost is we, in the past, have contracted with Energy Education, which is now known as Synergistics. And this is a program that helps find ways that we can conserve energy. And right now, our, our program is administered within the district by Tom Brunel, who is our energy educator. Tom works with the staff throughout the district to, to, to make them aware of simple ways that we can conserve energy. He also works with the maintenance department as they look at our boilers and, and how to best run our boilers and, and conserve energy that way. We started this program in oh seven, oh eight, so we've been at this for some time now. We don't refer to it as savings when we calculate this. We refer to it as cost avoidance. We call it cost avoidance because this is not something that we typically budget for. We're expecting not to have to pay it. So that's why I'm referring to it as cost avoidance. When we started this program in oh seven, oh eight, the cost avoidance that was calculated that year was about two hundred and ninety thousand dollars. For the years between two thousand eight, oh nine and eighteen, nineteen, the average cost avoidance per year was about four hundred and six thousand dollars. In the nineteen twenty school year, the cost avoidance was five hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. The reason it was a little bit higher is because that can be attributed to the fact that the district was closed from March of two thousand twenty through the end of the school year. And then in the two thousand twenty-one school year, our cost avoidance was almost three hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars, a little less than the average. That can be attributed to the fact that we implemented the air purge system in order to keep fresh air in our, in our buildings during the pandemic. But overall, since we started this program in September of two thousand seven through August of two thousand twenty-one, it is estimated that the district has avoided cost, energy cost of over five point six million dollars. So that's real important that we continue this. Mr. Brunel projects these savings. As you will see, there are program reports attached for your review. There's program reports for the last five years, and there's an overall program report attached for your review. But there are certain criteria that goes into calculating, calculating the cost, the, the projections. And that includes like, and I'm going to have Mr. Brunel talk a little bit more about this, but in addition to rates, it also, it looks at our historical usage and our projected uses. And that's based on thermes and kilowatt hours. So, so with that, I'm going to turn it over to the real expert, that's Mr. Brunel. And he can talk a little bit more about that.
Thanks, Linda. Yeah, it's, it's, it's us, East Green Bush School District, working with Synergistic to, to make these savings through work with the teachers and the, the maintenance department, boilers, all that, all that stuff. And then we have a third-party reporting system that we take the numbers from BOCES, put those numbers in, gallons of gas or oil, I'm sorry, gallons, gallons of oil up in DPS, thermes, kilowatt hours for electricity. And we put all that stuff into the computer. This third-party spits out information for us that shows us how much we maybe should have spent because of the cost of those different resources and things like temperature days. You know, a day like this compared to a day like thirty degrees or forty degrees, we spend more now. So that program does all that for us. I don't know what else. Is that just about hit it, Linda?
I think so, Tom. The software program that we use, that Tom uses for all of this is called Energy CAP. E-CAP program, it's a program that we renew the license for every year. That's about fifteen hundred dollars. We typically pay an admin fee of approximately eighty-five hundred dollars to cross-contract with OCM BOCES. So it's very little cost that we have to administer this program, which has really produced some, some real cost avoidance for us. Are there any questions?
I have a question, Linda. So when I go to these Energy CAP reports and I scroll through them, one of the things that I can, I, I look at the years here, let's just take twenty eighteen, nineteen, for example, and on page three, I guess this. The expected cost is like one point two million roughly. And then the actual cost is seven oh two. So then I go to the next year, nineteen twenty, which is kind of an anomaly, but it's, again, it's one point one eight five million than the actual cost. Why, how come the expected cost is so different? I mean, I should say it's, it stays the same and then it doesn't reflect the, the year's actual cost. I guess, how are they calculating that, that they're expecting it to be so high when it's not?
Well, that expected cost is, is what we would expect to have to pay if we were not part of these programs. So in other words, we're getting better rates on, on our energy, our gas and our electric because we're part of this cooperative bid. So that's one part of it. Another part of it that goes into the expect, expected cost is like Mr. Brunel was saying, it, it factors in weather. It factors in the age of our equipment and that sort of thing. So that's why those costs, basically what these reports are saying is that's what we would expect our cost to be if we were not implementing these programs with the district.
And, and you're seeing a big, big difference because it's on, based on our initial year. So if we never had the program, it would be two thousand seven, two thousand eight, carried on through today. So based on what our, what our usage was then, that's what we, we judge it on now. So that's why it seems, it seems kind of like big. Right? So it's based on what if we never took the program on.
It just seems like over time they want to adjust that. I guess I think that as you're part of a program for longer, you've invested in a lot of things. So at some point, there's got to be, the difference should shrink, I would imagine, but I can, I understand the number. Just, it's just interesting the way they, they use it.
We've had a lot of conversations about that with Synergistic, and they, they talked about, do we compare year to year? Because then that'll be more toward the real number. But everybody agreed that if we didn't take the program on, we would be spending just like we did in two thousand seven, two thousand eight. So that's why we compared to that.
Thank you.
And Linda, you said that we do put that into a saving or in the budget, that cost avoidance is part of the budget calculation, correct?
The extra expected cost is not part of the budget. So the cost avoidance is more or less built right into the budget.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thanks, Tom. Appreciate it. Thank you, Linda.
You're welcome. Thank you, Tom.
So the next discussion item is update on school operations, COVID-nineteen protocol. I know there's been a lot of changes recently. So I'll turn over Mr. Simons to, to brief us on that.
Thank you, Mr. Bruno. There have been a lot of changes to COVID-nineteen on a statewide basis. Really began before the holidays. And then very forward during this period of time after the holidays. So I want to provide the board much information as I have available right now on what is currently happening in the district's response to COVID-nineteen. What is happening on the state level, down to the county level, to our district level, which could impact the way that we are managing and responding to cases and students who may have come into contact with individuals who are positive. Obviously, everyone is aware that the infection rate is increased to a level that we have never experienced during this period of time. As we have been engaging with our BOCES and other districts and the county, we have made adjustments to respond not only to the infection rate, but also to the best information that we have available from the experts, which are include the CDC, New York State Department of Health and our county health. Testing has become a more prevalent concern, even more so than what it was prior to the holidays. And prior to the holidays, we talked about the fact that the district had started its implementation of surveillance testing for our student athletes who were not in high-risk sports. That testing is continuing. Currently, there was a period of time, about a week, where we needed to put in place more staff through Questar. That adjustment was made and we picked back up after the holidays with this surveillance testing that is being done by a team of people from Questar. Additionally, right before the holiday break, we were able Can everyone hear me? We were able to implement point-of-care testing. Point-of-care testing machines and materials are in each of our nurses' offices. We started that process with students who become symptomatic while at school. They can go down to the nurse's office if the parent has provided consent. They can be tested with a point-of-care. And we are collecting that data and we're reporting that data. That data has increased a little bit over the course of this week. And now it is dropping down a little bit. The point-of-care testing, number of students that we point-of-care test is, is dropping down. Additionally, we started point-of-care testing after the holidays for our employees. And we did so because we were experiencing and still are experiencing shortage of employees in key areas. And one of the factors that we wanted to try to address was we have, we have an employee out, such as a bus driver, such as a teacher or a teaching assistant or anyone. And we're getting to the point where we aren't able to cover the responsibilities, whether that be a classroom or drive a bus. So we opened up point-of-care testing to our staff only for those staff that become symptomatic while at school. Additionally, we are, we set up a separate location at Goff, which is right around the corner from our transportation, where at any point in time during the day, with a little bit of prior notice, we can test our drivers or our transportation employees. That testing is being done by our school nurses, all the point-of-care testing. We're tracking the data and I have sent the data to the Board of Education, and it's all being reported through the ECLAR system that is managed by the state. And at this point, that testing, based on the feedback I have received and the data I've looked at, has not overwhelmed our staff, but we are monitoring it. The districts were asked, district superintendents were asked to participate in a meeting with Governor Huckle over the Christmas recess. I participated in that meeting, and at that meeting, Governor Huckle announced that the district, the state was moving to provide school districts with at-home testing kits that could be distributed to the parents. And the intention of those at-home testing kits were to have a resource available for parents as we began the new, the new, the new year so that schools could stay open and that we could make sure that COVID was being, that kids who were symptomatic or parents who just wanted to feel that there might not be an issue with their child returning back to school would have tests available as opposed to kids keeping out of school and having to wait, for example, at a, at a testing site like a WellNow, anywhere between five or seven days to get the result back at that time. So we collected the at-home testing kits through Questar. We delivered them to the schools. Our staffing was arranged by our principals to distribute those at-home tests. And the parents overall seemed very appreciative of the district's effort and actually demonstrated in many ways their appreciation for our efforts by bringing hot chocolate to our staff at Red Mill or offering to bring it and at Green Meadow and other schools. Many nice things were done from our parents to show the appreciation. So the at-home tests are, are, the state and the country is moving in the direction of at-home tests. Because of the rapid rate of spread of this particular strand of the virus, Omicron, and the amount of time that individuals, students, families, anyone, members of the public were waiting for results. and the amount of time that individuals, students, families, anyone, members of the public were waiting for results, impact on the employment of our employees, impact on our operations and impact on students being in class. The other thing that has occurred in the recent days is the state has reopened some of the larger testing sites. So there are two that I know of in the area in proximity at University Albany, Colonial Quad Dining Hall and at the Crossgate Mall. So that is a resource available for any families, any employees. And my feedback that I have received through some individuals that have gone there, that the turnaround time of the test is very quick. In fact, we had at least one parent who had a test result from the at-home test, wanted to confirm it, drove out to U Albany or drew out, drove out to Crossgate and that result came back on their drive back. So that's good news that the state is expanding testing available for members of our community. Last week, school districts received information that was distributed and communicated to employees and parents that the quarantine and isolation period required of everyone, students, employees, members of the general public, based on CDC information and guidance, was reduced from 10 days to five. Technically, it is six days with the first day of symptoms or the first day in which someone receives the test results, counting as day zero, and then you count five days from there. If symptoms are resolving, if someone is asymptomatic, who has been COVID positive, they can come back to work if they're an employee. They can come back to school if they're a student. Additionally, the, the home tests have not, were not at that time approved for reporting and acceptance of the county, our county. Since that time, there has been a modification to the quarantine and isolation criteria because initially we were concerned that students who were fully vaccinated, employees who were fully vaccinated, would now be required to have a booster in order to not be quarantined if they were identified as a contact. New York State Department of Health, I think on Tuesday, reviewed that issue and sent us a memo that the full vaccination, not the booster, is required in the event that somebody is in contact with COVID-19. So that was a relief for us. Everyone in the community worked hard to make sure that as many employees and students who chose to get the vaccine were vaccinated. There is no longer a requirement for people to return to class and/or to work after being exposed by having to have the booster. There is still some clarification that we are seeking regarding extracurricular activities. The latest guidance that we have said from the state, we have received from the state indicates that the five-day period is in place, but that that five-day period only applies to, in the case of employees coming to work and going home, and in the case of students taking the bus, going to class and going home. And that if you, if they have pre and quarantine and want to participate in extracurricular activities, have to be boosted. No districts that I know of right now have implemented that requirement as of yet. There is a discussion that we are expected to receive further state guidance and we are not implementing that requirement right now. We're going to wait a little bit to see if the state clarifies this issue as they did the other one related to the boosters. Additionally, the governor announced this week, and the counties have informed us that the counties and the state are no longer going to be contact tracing. So contact tracing on the state level and the county level is going out, going out. It's, it's in somewhat in a transition right now. The fact that they are not contact tracing anymore has caused some ambiguity regarding what the expectations are of our nurses and our administrators. To shift to what we are supposed to do to make sure that we are accurately monitoring the dates at which students are released, come back to school, applying the criteria appropriately in the event that we do have an instance where somebody has come into close contact within the school. At this point, we're still trying to work out how the schools be impacted by this. And we've been having conversations with the Department of Health, with all the districts and seeking some clarification about what we are doing. This week, based on conversations that have occurred across the state about the new parameters for quarantine and isolation, tests to stay has become a very prevalent topic. Some counties were already permitting schools to implement tests to stay prior to the state's announcement that they were moving in this direction of at-home testing. And the second piece of that direction, which I didn't mention is counties are putting the information regarding isolation and quarantine on their website. Our county has that information and they are moving towards families, community members implementing a self-service model, which means you go on the website, if you think you or your child or a family member has COVID-19, you go on the website, you read the isolation criteria, you read the quarantine criteria, you follow those parameters, you click on a link, you fill out an affirmation form. There's two different affirmation forms, one if you are isolated because you are a positive case and one that you are quarantined. You print that out and if you need to provide something to your employer, rather than getting a letter from the county department of health, you're filling it out yourself. If you need to provide something to the school to indicate that you are quarantined, you're doing it yourself and you're sending it into the school. This is all being done because of the volume of cases and the information that is indicated. In most cases, individuals who are COVID-19 with this particular strand are resolving their symptoms within five days. And that the first two days of contracting the virus seems to be when people are the most contagious. So the turnaround time that would be necessary to continue to contact trace those individuals, to get a test result back, right? By the time all of that occurs, the person is better. So the direction of the entire state is moving to self-service, at-home testing. And districts are now talking about in our region, tests to stay. The model of tests to stay has not been worked out yet. We envision more discussions next week. Tests to stay will require a board policy based on our attorney's recommendation. The districts met today to discuss some of the logistics of tests to stay and try to clarify what we're supposed to do. We're going to have more discussions next week. And at this time, I feel like the home tests should be utilized. I feel the county believes that those results are valid. They just do not have a system to collect that information. And they have indicated to us, if the schools could create a system to collect that information, we could use home tests. So we envision starting to do that. We want to, we want to, we want to participate in a test to stay initiative. We want to iron out how this is all going to work. But that's, is what's happening right now regarding schools. The other thing I want to talk about before I take any questions is our district this year, along with our state and our county, we've lost the signal. Hopefully it's just the TV. Mr. Lam, has prioritized in-person learning. We want our students in class. We want their, them to benefit academically, socially, emotionally. And we also recognize that the mental health needs of our students were impacted by the experiences of having to engage due to the limitations of where we were at, the limitations of remote learning. I want to just inform the public that that is coming with a lot of effort, which is being done by our administrators, our teachers and all of our support staff. And that on a daily basis, we are asking people to pitch in and to fill roles that they typically don't, and they are doing it with a spirit of, of cooperation. However, we are experiencing shortage of bus drivers, shortages of teachers, shortages of teaching assistants, shortages of nurses, shortages of administrators, shortages of every employee group. Today, we had 50 teachers absent. I'm not sure exactly how many total employees we had out today. But at the beginning of this week, it was very high in the transportation department. It's getting a little better as people are coming back after the five-day period. Our district is not removed from the impact of the current situation with COVID-19 on our ability to be able to make sure that we have sufficient staff to provide the programs and services to the students. Every day is a daily adjustment. We are continuing to make that adjustment. And we say that because we just ask the public to be patient regarding what is occurring in the district as we emphasize in-person learning. The other dilemma that we have had is we want our parents and our employees to have as much information about the what-ifs. What would we do if we were forced by staff absences as a last resort, a last desirable resort, to shift to full remote? And by bringing it up at this meeting, I'm not signaling that we're going to go to full remote tomorrow. I'm just sharing with everybody here and in the community that we will be providing some information about what that remote learning plan would look like. It doesn't mean that we're going to go to remote learning. And if we do, we will try to provide as much advance notice as is feasible. And it is all a factor of whether we stay in person and shift to remote of the daily attendance of our employees who are being impacted, like everyone, by COVID-19 and illness. So far, we've been able to limp along through the work of everybody in the community and the district. We're going to continue that process. We hope that over the next two to three weeks, based on what we know, the CDC is talking about, the state is talking about, and the county is talking about, that the infection rate hopefully will decline. And that in combination with the five-day isolation and quarantine period and a number of things that we've done, the testing that I've described, the adjustments that we're making, that we will be able to stay in person. So we're going to send a plan out, but I don't want anybody to interpret that, that we are going to shift. We will let you know. But I also don't want parents to scramble and not understand what the expectations are going to be for their children if that day comes. I'm hoping that it doesn't. Well, now at this point, I'll take any questions that the board may have.
Thank you, Mr. Simons. Board members, any questions? Take it off.
So, sorry, sorry, Jen. Just kind of two comments really. One is, I, I do think there was confusion, Jeff, about, you know, we gave away the test, but based on the regulations really set forth by our county, I believe, we weren't allowed to accept positive results on the home tests. So I, I think there was just some confusion going on. I have to tell you, those home tests are wonderful and, and I, I've got a lot of, you know, comments and positive feedback on giving them out. I think there was just some confusion of you couldn't accept that in order to keep them out of school. They needed to have another test. So that was comment one. But comment two, and I, I do want to bring it back up, is exactly what you said. I think we all need to remember to have flexibility and kind of work with all of you on, in the schools. Just like we are experiencing all over the industries, we are just have a shortage due to COVID and people are doing things that they normally don't do or people are doing things and it's taking longer because of the volume. And so I do ask the community to kind of remember that and do have patience, whether it's with the school bus administrator, teacher, nurses, school cafeteria people. It, it doesn't matter. We're, they're, everybody's struggling to try to make sure we stay in person and that's the most critical part. So hopefully everybody can just kind of have some flexibility and accommodate things when things don't exactly go as planned.
Thanks, Michelle. Jennifer, did you have something to say?
Yeah, I had similar comments. I did hear some of the confusion as well from parents about what was the use of the home test and whatnot. I think as a barometer, if you should get another test, if it's more serious, they're good certainly to have on hand because it's so difficult to get an appointment for a PCR. And then I just appreciate everything everyone across the district is doing that we are remaining open. I know a lot of neighboring districts are not, have gone hybrid or, you know, didn't go back immediately after break. So I just appreciate and I know from a lot of students that just being there is so critical to, like you said, their mental health and their success academically.
Thanks, Jennifer. Anyone else? Mark?
So with the state and their, not saying that contact tracing is needed anymore and, and they're pushing it down again to the county levels. Isn't it the county, the one that gives us the authority to do the contact tracing on their behalf?
No longer doing that. There are no, counties are getting out of contact tracing as well.
That's what I'm saying. So if the county's not going to give us the authority to, to do that anymore, like we discussed the incident we had, where the county gives us the authority to do that. So if the counties are getting away from it, and I'm sure Rensselaer County will, and the state is pushing it, does that mean we're going to stop as well?
I, I, it's the state's authority that we'll be acting under now, is my understanding, that the state, state is moving in this direction. It, we will be stating, we're acting under the state's authority. And when someone provides us that, that letter, that is being done through the counties. So I haven't, I haven't seen the, I've seen the form that you fill out, but I haven't seen what actually gets printed out. That's coming with the authority of the county and the state, as I understand it. So, so you print out something, I don't know this to be true about Rensselaer County, but it has been shared as an example from one of our other counties in the BOCs. They print out a letter, it has the signature of the Department of Health
Right.
on that. So that is, that is an official document that indicates that the person is isolated or quarantined. And that still comes from, it's a statewide system coming down through the county. So we're not really making the determination to, the, the, the families are or the employees or the students are. And it's based on the resource that is provided through the county's website.
Okay.
Thank you, Jeff.
Very, very challenging to stay on top of and, and I would echo with the Jennifer and Michelle said, you know, about patience through these times and stay up to date on the information. You know, I want, I really appreciate the, the COVID-19 update page has lots of information for people to go to. The communication channels are open and we're trying to get information and push it out as quickly as we know what it is. it out as quickly as we know what it is and make sure that our families know how to react, um, for different situations and staying up to date. I do notice that, you know, the quarantine numbers are actually down, but the cases are up. So that's the impact really is if you look at some of these numbers on the cases, the quarantining and it seems like the bus issue, the changes they've made there have really helped to avoid the, uh, the quarantine pieces, but now it's just this, the vast number of actual cases that are involved. So, um, we'll stay on top of that. The, uh, appreciate everyone pitching in and doing the things they need to do to take on different roles, different responsibilities and, and hopefully that in the next few weeks we'll see the downward trend that we're expected, um, and keep our fingers crossed that we can continue to stay in person and that's the goal of this board and administration to make sure that we stay in person, um, unless pushed to the limits and we, and we just can't. And like Mr. Simons said, we'll have information to share so that if it does occur, we're prepared and that's what it's about, being prepared. Okay. Anyone else?
Mr. Bureau, can I add? Uh, I wanted to respond to the confusion about the home test that Mrs. Kaminsky and Sir Brian brought up. Um, I would like to move in the direction, and that may come within the next few days of accepting those home tests. Okay. And that was the general sense of all the districts in the county. However, the particulars about that still really need to be worked a little bit with our nurses and, uh, with the region. Um, what does that actually mean to accept a home test? If, if someone tests positive on a home test and came in contact, was in the school and came in contact with students, does that mean we are quarantining students and applying that criteria based on the home test? That's the question. Or, or if somebody tests negative on a home test, we allow them to come back if they meet the other criteria for symptom resolution. So we got to work out use of home tests and how we use them. Are we using them for gas confirming a positive? But if that positive person came into contact, do we still have that obligation to contact trace as we have been doing? Uh, secondly, if the person tests negative but has symptoms, make sure the nurses all have the understanding of the process by which the administrators, that person would be permitted to come back. One way to possibly do that is offer one of the PCR tests as well when they come back to school and that's something that we talked about today. But I would like to move in the direction of counting those home tests because it doesn't make any sense to do otherwise because the state has told us, you're going to get one more shipment of at-home tests, but we're not going to give you any more unless you move into this test to stay mode. So we've got to, in my view, we've got to move in that direction and we've got to count the at-home tests because it's the resource that's being relied on right now and the strategy has changed. So that, that's what our considerations are regarding the at-home tests.
Thank you, Mr. Simons. Anyone else? Comments? Okay. Good discussion. Moving on to the agenda to regular business, approval of programs for resident children with disabilities. Any questions or comments? C9, you motion to approve that? Kathleen, second. Joanne, all those in favor? Approved. Moving on to our committee reports, we'll start with Marissa.
I just want to provide a update briefly on our vacant positions. Ms. McGrath and I are holding nurse position, um, the 10-month role that will be rotation ing between all of our elementary schools, assisting all of our nurses with COVID responsibilities. We have two final candidates, um, are scheduled for tomorrow. We have our Spanish position at the middle school, um, still vacant. We've posted again, um, and that posting will be closing on the 19th of January. We have a social worker position at Goff, um, due to a recent resignation. That posting closes today and Ms. McGrath and Mrs. Barker are reviewing the candidates. We have several teaching position, teaching assistant positions open, one full-time in Mrs. Squatchy's building, um, one full-time at Goff Middle School, and then also several part-time positions, um, for the middle school and the high school. We have several monitor positions open as well. We have two at Belltop and then we also have senior monitor positions open at our secondary schools. The automotive mechanic posting closed earlier this week. We have two mechanic, uh, positions vacant right now. We have one applicant and, um, I am working with our transportation department to set up those interviews. We conducted bus driver interviews, um, prior to the break. We held six interviews. Um, we're conducting references, um, and we've finished several of those references and moving forward those candidates, um, to start training. Um, none of those candidates currently hold the CDL license. And then lastly, our assistant superintendent search, um, is still ongoing and that posting closes on January 21st.
Thanks, Marissa. Any questions for Marissa? Linda, anything?
None at this time, Mr. Bureau.
Thank you, Linda. Um, Jim is not here, Mr. Simons. We, anything on the CCS?
I'll just say the Committee on Curriculum Studies minutes are attached. If any board members have any questions, uh, please let me know.
Thank you. And then, Mr. Simons?
We're going to be holding our first Business Advisory Committee of the Year. We have formulated, uh, a few years ago, uh, an acting committee that involves teachers, counselors, uh, colleges in the area, as well as business partners and representatives of the trade unions. Uh, we focus on, uh, educating our staff about career paths that are available for students in the current, uh, economy, but also within the region where they, there are vacancies and what the job market is and what the pathways are to be able to obtain some of the positions that are available. Uh, one of our partners is Siemens Corporation, which is a global corporation that focuses on, uh, energy, uh, technology and other, uh, fields. Uh, they have a local representative that works with schools. We've been working with him over the last few years. One of the areas that is of concern to, uh, the field are making sure that we have enough people that are interested and trained to work in building automation and HVAC systems and all of the sophisticated controls and management that is now required to heat and air condition a building, uh, control the temperatures and the amount of, uh, skills and now is required to move into those fields. So there'll be a presentation on pathways for, um, building automation. Additionally, uh, Siemens has partnered with the group that conducts the Career Jam that's been in their region lately. This is a career fair in fields that generally, um, need employees. Last year they had a virtual career fair and our district had the most number of students there in the capital region because, uh, Jill Barker and DeBreen Aliva, one of our home and careers teacher, family consumer and science teacher recruited every eighth grader and set up an opportunity for all of our eighth graders to participate. So DeBreen will be coming to the meeting to talk about the students' experiences and what she did to follow up with students. She's been very active in this whole process of educating kids about careers. And there is now a new online community available for people that want to talk about and explore opportunities in various STEM fields that our students can be part of, our families can be part of, and our staff can be part of. So we're interested in learning about that. Additionally, when we met with them, Jim McQ and I met with them before the holidays, they are trying to organize and sponsor a rocket drone. I think it's a competition or an activity in the capital region where kids, I believe, build, program and compete in a gymnasium. We indicated that we'd like to do that at Columbia High School and there's an opportunity being set up between Mike Harkin and the representatives of this organization to come in March, invite other district administrators to learn what this is all about, set it up in our gym, and then if there's enough interest, we would host a student opportunity, uh, later on. So a lot of good things going to be shared and talked about at our Business Advisory Meeting on January 19th. And any board members who have the time and the interest, it'll be a Zoom meeting at 4:30 on January 19th. Should be very positive and interesting. And concludes my report.
Any questions for Mr. Simons? Thank you, Mr. Simons. Next item on the agenda is table of motions. I have nothing at this time. Um, all business, board members, anything? No? Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda then, items A through G. Any questions or comments on the consent agenda? No? I just want to make a note, acknowledgement of the gifts, um, to the district, very, very nice anonymous donation and of course the Haniford. If there's no other comments or questions, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda. John, second. Frank, all those in favor? Approved. Addendum, nothing at this time. Uh, new business, board members, anything you want to bring up? No? Good. Now moving to our second public forum. Linda, do we have any comments? Emails?
No comments. No comments.
Great. Thank you. And we'll move to our second board forum. Start with Cheryl, anything? Yeah. John? Good? Mark? Good? Kathleen?
Hey, I did forget to mention earlier, the other night I was watching the news and they had a young lady from East Green Bush, I believe she was one of our students, who led the Pledge of Allegiance at, uh, Governor Hokel's State of the State address. And she's a local Brownie or Girl Scout, excuse me, I think Girl Scout from Goff. And I don't remember her name, but.
I sent her a letter and off the top of my head, I don't remember her name, but I'll let the board know, uh, who that was. And we sent her a letter of congratulations to say, came to our attention after she did it.
It was very exciting to see one of our young people being interviewed on the news and talking about her experience at, you know, this, this big event.
Excellent. Thank you, Kevin.
Thanks, Kathleen. Joanne?
I just wanted to take a second to express my sympathies to Columbia, um, the Columbia staff and the Lally family on the passing of Mrs. Lally. Um, a tragic loss for her family and to the district. Um, I've heard so many wonderful things from the special ed students and families at Columbia and she will be missed in the district.
Thank you, Joanne. Appreciate that. Frank, anything? Nothing at this time? Michelle? Anything? Good? Jennifer? Good? All right. I just want to say that, uh, thank you for hosting this evening, Helen. The, the building looks great. Um, the pre-K program presentation was wonderful. And again, just want to echo for the community, the, we're all going through some very difficult times at home, at school, at work, and we're dealing with a lot of issues together and, you know, patience is important and being on the same page and just working together to get our kids to school every day and to, to stay safe is important. Uh, and we'll get through this. So, um, I appreciate it. Let it be, uh, start the, the school year off on the January. I hope everyone had a great holiday and, and I just hope things, uh, again, improve and, and get brighter for us as a community. And again, thank you for hosting this evening and the bright spot of the pre-K was really a joy to see the children in the screen and, uh, and if we get a chance to visit again, I'm sure call Helen and, uh, really love to host and stuff. But we do have need for executive session. There may be need to come back into public session after that, but at this time I would ask for motion to move into executive session for purposes of, uh, purposes of personnel and contractual issues. Uh, Michelle, second. Kathleen, all those in favor? All right. We'll stay right here, Mr. Simons. So thank you, everyone. Have a great night.